It would have been fun as if the mayor had changed his question every time he looked at his TV. That would have been fun.
Let's call the meeting to order. Aaron, would you do a roll call?
Schmidt.
Here.
Havik.
Here.
Meverden.
Here.
Swedberg.
Here.
Lattenbach.
Here.
Boer.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
And if you could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting isn't compliance with the open meeting law? Is there any, I'd like an approval of the agenda or any changes that need to be made? Can I get a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as written. Okay, public hearing. Aaron, could I get you to read?
Okay, so now on the agenda, we have the citizens' participation public hearing for the redevelopment project funded by community development block grant funds. During the public hearing, we will hear, we will get an update on the project activities, an update on the status of displacements and relocations, and a brief overview of the housing needs as identified within the city of Algoma. Could you ask for a motion?
Okay, could I get a motion to go into the public participation hearing? Okay, okay.
So the motion was made by Mitch, seconded by Steve.
Okay.
And it is 6:01 PM.
Yep. Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Okay.
During the public hearing, we will turn it over to Gail Lindenberg from Robert E. Lee and Associates, one of the city's engineers for this project, to go over the updates, and then we will take public comment on the project. Hi, Gail.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Actually, I'm going to put the first item under Ryan's purview. He's the one that is taking care of the actual contract, contract documents. I'm assuming, oh, there he went to speaker. He's taking care of the demolition project, the asbestos project, and the infrastructure project. I'm taking care of more of the CDVG. So, Ryan, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. Just a little update on the RDA projects. Peters Concrete started today on the infrastructure project, working on the sanitary sewer. They'll be continuing to work on the infrastructure project up until November 15th. That is the substantial completion date. Prior to that, they'll also be completing the demolition of all the buildings associated with the RDA block. We had the pre-construction meeting for the asbestos abatement this morning, and they're planning to tentatively start Thursday, and they should be all complete by October 18th. That's kind of a quick rundown on the projects, but open up to the floor if there's questions on more details associated with the project.
Does, does anyone have any questions for him? Okay, there are no questions. You can move on.
At this time, I'll, excuse me, Madam Mayor, point of order, because it is a public hearing, if there's anybody from the public that has any questions, if they please come to the podium at this time, if anybody from the public has questions.
All right, so should I move on to the update on the status of residential displacement?
Yes, please.
All right, so as far as residential displacement and relocation at system activities, those have already been completed, and that's why we are able to proceed with the asbestos abatement, the demo, and the infrastructure. Item C is the housing needs identified in the community. The housing needs are trying to increase the stock of affordable housing. In this project, by demoing many of these properties, we, we, sorry, the city has plans in the works to put in at least as many units as are being displaced. So this should, or should fulfill some of that need. Hopefully, it'll spur other activity, which is our hope and desire. That leaves the public input item on the agenda.
Gail, my understanding, this is Jake Mary.
Hi, Jake.
My understanding that we're putting in, the developer is proposing 24 flats of apartments and four townhomes. Is that correct?
I'm gonna have to defer to Ryan or Mike or Matt on this.
I apologize, Jake. Your question, are they putting up 24?
24 flats and four townhomes.
That is correct.
Okay. So that should actually exceed.
We exceed the.
By a bunch what we're replacing.
That is correct.
I have a question. I'm John Havik, and first one. And I was wondering how affordable was defined for affordable housing?
Let me look that up, because there is a technical definition. Affordable. And feel free, if somebody actually remembers it, looking at you, Matt, because I think I remember we discussed this.
And yes, I concur. You are correct. There is a definition, and I do not have it in front of me.
Darn it. Okay, let me, that's what, let me look it up on this. Amber to the rescue. It is a percentage of the median household income. And I think it's, for some reason, 30% seems to be the number that we would like it to be at. So you're supposed to take about the median household income of your community, and it's about 30%. And that was the intent going into this grant, that we would be removing areas that were considered blighted and then replacing it with new household, or new units that were considered affordable.
Thank you. So, just clarification. So 30% of the income of the median income in the community or of that person?
Of the community. Now, please take into account, there's been dramatic inflation. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but most people are. So that is the intent, and that's where we're supposed to target.
So if someone with a higher income would want to go in there, would that be complicated for them? I'm just trying to figure what we're, I understand we're targeting affordable income, but what if we don't fill it that way? I'm not, I'm not against affordable income. I'm just trying to figure out how to keep it full.
How to keep it full?
Well, how, yeah, say, say there's not enough applicants, 24, 28 applicants in a low, lower income or the medium income. Say somebody that makes $500,000 a year wants to live in one of those places. Does that become complicated for that person?
Well, that, that really isn't our purview, Steve. That, that, that'll be over to the developer.
So, once we're done and we turn this back into green space, we then turn this over to the developer, and the developer, at that point, it's his responsibility to fill those. The city is no longer on the hook for that project.
Okay.
Okay?
Amber stepped out, so she could, she's been with, focusing on this grant from the very get-to-all of it. We stepped in at the grant administration, so I'm gonna kind of defer to her right now.
So the developer has a sliding scale. Rent will be based on the individual tenant's income. So depending on where they fall in, it could be 30% or 60% of the median household income, and then a percentage of that is what the.
That's kind of what I was getting at, is if somebody that's got a lot of money wants to live cheaply, does he get there?
No, no. The simple answer, now that you ask it that way, if somebody that makes $150,000 a year, he doesn't get to live there for $250 a month rent in a one-bedroom apartment.
The developer's primary focus is going to be the low to moderate income families, but they do have some market built into it, market rate, so your standard people who aren't in that low to moderate bracket. I want to say it was just like 5% or 10% of the units, maybe. It's not a lot that are market rate. The vast majority are the low to moderate income designated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions you want to ask? There are no other questions then. Thank you.
Gail, did we go through all the CDVG boxes, the requirements?
That, yes, that checks all the boxes. Aaron, so you were able to fill out that documentation of the citizens' participation certification.
Awesome, thank you.
And Gail, just one.
Thank you, everyone.
Gail, before you go, just one more, no, she's gone.
No, she's here.
Oh, Gail, just, just, just one more. Abatement starts when?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, that's.
Through the 18th.
Through the 18th. All right, so they've got, one, two, three, they got, they got 10 days in. Holy cow. Okay, all right.
They do it for a living.
I hope.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, then it is now 6:11, and if we have no other comments, I ask for a motion to go out of the public hearing, close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed.
All right, I'm just gonna disconnect with real quick. Thank you, Gail. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Have a great day. Goodbye.
Okay, am I ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the three September meetings. Could I get a motion to approve those? Second, Casey. All in favor, say aye.
Motion made by Casey, seconded by Steve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstain. I have to abstain because I wasn't here on the 6th. I can, I can say aye on the other two, but I can't on the September 6th. I was ill.
Okay, so the 6th, you're abstaining from, the 20th and 22nd, everybody's in favor, motion carries. Is that word for everybody? Okay?
Okay, public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk to the council? Anyone, okay. Last, last chance, okay. If not, then we're gonna move on to the consideration of bills and claims and conference. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the bills on credit caping? Yes, you have questions on there?
Questions.
Okay.
You can answer this. Teleflex, 56250 for needles on 8/23, and then a month later, 56250 for needles from Teleflex again. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. They went through their invoicing and found that we had an invoice open from April of 2021. I can't push the invoice date that back, so the day that they brought that to my attention, we looked through it. The MS Director, Cost, verified that yes, we did get needles back then, so we did owe the money. So that's why it's entered the way it is. Thank you for, for asking about that.
I think that's all I have.
Casey, that's about it on the marina fuel?
No, there will probably be about two or three yet. They'll be pretty small, but we will now, the marina is closed, there are still some boats in there. They'll probably fill up possibly before they leave, and then there will be, it probably, it will be filled before the end of the year, so we don't have condensation issues in the tank.
Are there any other questions on the bills? Nothing, can I get a motion to approve the bills? Okay, Steve, is there a second?
Motion made by Steve, seconded by Mitch.
Okay, do a roll call, please.
Meverden.
Yes.
Schmidt. Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Motion carries. Committee reports. Does anyone have any questions on any of the committee reports that were presented?
Make a motion to approve the committee reports as presented.
Okay, is there a second to the approval of the committee reports?
Second.
Okay.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Lee.
Yep, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Those are approved. Okay, motion to approve receipt of committee reports, we just did. Old business, anything else to come from old business? Otherwise, we'll move on to the new. Okay. We have a letter that I would like the council to support. Economic Development Corp. is, is asking the city to send a letter to the county, basically asking them to continue approving and giving payment to Economic Development Corp. And I asked, rather than just the mayor and Matt signing, that the entire council would, would support Economic Development Corp. So I, I did get signatures from some, but if, whoever didn't sign, if you'd like to sign it, we could add that to it. Okay, then the next item is actually the ad hoc committee downtown. Matt, do you want to talk about the group?
I think, and I don't have the list, you have it in front of you, Madam Mayor, but this is something that we had talked about moving forward. We started to put this list together here. I think I've talked, or the mayor has talked to everybody that is on the list. Every council member we've got input from, but yeah, it's a mayor's appointment to this ad hoc committee with the adoption of the council, so.
Well, the council right now would be Lee Dashlet and John Pavish, representing the city council. Ryan Huffman is one of the owners of Richmond Center Downtown, and then Haley Crop is the building next door that's being remodeled next to Richmond Center, Brad Schmiling from the winery, and Katie Brandt that has a gift shop on Fourth Street. So I think we got a good representation of, of the people that are on that street that would know what the parking issues are. Okay, so could I get?
Madam Mayor, could you repeat those names, please?
Lee, Lee Dashlet, John Pavish, Ryan Huffman, Haley Crop, Brad Schmiling, and Katie Brandt.
Thank you.
And they all are very excited about, they're anxious to get in and start solving that issue, so I think we make some headway with that, so. To form the committee, I'd like somebody to make the motion to allow us to approve, to set up this ad hoc committee and appoint these people on it.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The committee is now going to be formed. Okay. Then the next thing is a resolution for the Public Works truck purchase. Aaron, do you?
Okay, so we have Resolution Number 1141-2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado MD 4500 and equipment for the Public Works Department.
Make a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, would you do a roll call, Aaron, on that?
Is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions first?
Scott, do you have a question?
The resolution as presented includes all of the.
Yes, so the resolution as presented, I just want to make clarification to this. So if you go back and look at the resolution that you saw in front of you at Finance and Personnel versus the resolution you have before you tonight, there is some changes to it. We went back to the drawing board, and when we originally did the resolution, we wrote the truck purchase in without the municipal discount because of the size of the truck, that we are able to get a municipal discount. So this truck that, or this resolution that you have before you tonight is actually $4,292.64 cheaper than the resolution you had before you in Finance and Personnel. So just clarification. So the truck port purchase, same thing from E-Wall, is 55,212 and zero change. That's what you have before you tonight.
Okay, any other questions?
Lee made that motion, and John seconded, so roll call. Meverden.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mary.
The next item is res- resolution for the roofing work.
All right, so the next one is Resolution 1142-2022, a resolution authorizing a contract for roofing work. Looks like that'll be roofing work for Evergreen Cemetery and Perry Field. Is there any other place? And Peterson Park.
So I got a question. So before, we got a quote for 9,600 for, or 8,700 for two roofs, and now we got one for 96 for three.
Four. Four.
For four roofs?
Yeah.
And you went through and made sure they're bidding apples for apples, and they're not just cheating us on stuff?
Yes, so Casey did walk those roofs, contractor then crawled up on each one of the roofs and looked at them, measured them, and that's where those prices come from.
And then you, like, they're doing, you know, 15-pound felt and all that, that's all the same?
Not doing, is it gutters? Not replacing the gutters.
Because that's, I mean, that is only $800, you know, more than what Burr had in 2021.
Yeah, and we're adding two roofs.
Yeah, and prices should have went up from, and that's why I'm afraid, are they not including stuff? But if you did that, okay.
Not to beat it up, but he just said 15-pound felt. Havik used 30-pound felt. Is that what you're using?
Or 30, whatever.
I don't know exactly what was spec delved, if you know or not, but it's one thing we can double check.
Yeah, just, that little bit means a lot.
Are they doing with 30 now?
Yeah. And it doesn't cost much more, so hopefully that's what they're using.
Any other questions? If not, could I get a motion to approve the resolution for the roof work?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That resolution is approved. The next resolution?
Resolution 1143-2022, a resolution authorizing the Algoma Utility, Algoma Utilities to voluntarily contribute, contribute $3,080 to the American Transmission Company for additional capital needs.
So move. Second.
Okay, are there any questions? Now, would you do a roll call on that resolution?
Boer.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Okay, then we move on to the administrators' report.
Couple things here, quick. I think everybody is well aware, but 4 o'clock tomorrow, 4:00 PM, budget workshop right here at City Hall. We will get that kicked off. Clifton, Larson, and Allen will be joining us tomorrow with the 21, some Cliff Notes on the 2021 audit. They will be on with us via Zoom tomorrow for a brief, take any questions from council. Because of our time restraints and our budget tonight, we pushed them back into the start tomorrow. We weren't tying up too much with the public hearing that we had. 2022 Street Utility Project, there's two things that we're still waiting for, and then that will be capped up and finalized. That's the Third Street Project. Now, I guess I just want to let everybody aware of that. Two little things that have to be addressed yet, that will be closed off, or closed up, and we should have final here, I'm hoping by the end of this week, that authorization to make payment on that final payment for that. The redevelopment area, obviously Ryan and Gail, our engineers from Robert E. Lee, kind of went through that. I do have a couple Cliff Notes about that, but it's more or less, they started the infrastructure work today. And just to add a little bit to what Ryan said, so as the, the abatement company starts abating these houses and they're clear, they will be in contact that they've been cleared out and everything is good to go for demolition. In this contract, Peters Concrete or Peters Construction has the contract for the infrastructure in the road and the demolition. If there's a rain day or something like that, you might start to see these houses, little by little, get taken down, taken apart. So everybody on the council and the community knows, everything will come out, it has to be landfilled. The basements that are concrete stone will all be, all the material that has to come out will come out, and then that'll be hauled up on Sunset where they've been crushing and making gravel out of the basements, and then come back down, probably on this job site for fill. So that's kind of what's going on with that and, and where we are, like you heard earlier as well. The marina is closed, like everybody, you know, Sunday was our last day open, October 1st is what our boater's contracts say, but there are a couple boats still in there. The guys will start breaking down A Dock probably as soon as this week and moving it over and start to remove it out of the water. That gives a little bit of time for the couple of boats that are still on B Dock, and they have a couple, the charter guys have a couple trips left. But as soon as that timeframe is up, those docks will be moved over and taken out of the water as well. But we'll start probably this week for sure, with the river docks will all come up, so.
How are things working out with those new docks? Is it a more efficient process now, or is it?
I think we get, you know, taking them out, putting them in, we get a little better every year, changing things. It's a lot nicer to put them in and, and put them together in spring than go down there and spring and find out what's all smashed and broke and try to figure out what you're gonna bend or try to weld galvanize steel and, yeah.
So leaving them in place on the, in the parking lot, you know, stacked up right there has been a good?
Yeah, it's been working, I think, fairly good. Casey, do you have anything to add to it? So, yeah. Just a little thing here to go over for our clerk. A general election will be held November 8th. In-person absentee voting will begin Thursday, October 25th, for the general public that is listening to this. And myself and the fire chief, we're at a meeting last week with the town of Anapee. We are meeting tonight after this meeting with the town of Pierce along with the mayor, and we're working on opening up our contracts and redoing everything with the town of Anapee, the town of Pierce, and the town of Lincoln with our rescue contracts. So we have, one, we started the conversation with the town of Anapee, and we are meeting with the town of Pierce tonight to go through that. So that's, I think, kind of off to the right tone here and, and hopefully get that set in motion. And hopefully, if everything continues, I don't know if it'll be October yet, but, or, I'm sorry, November yet, but by December, I think we'll have new contracts in front of the council to, to look at. So hopefully for sure, they'll buy Finance and Personnel in November.
Has it seemed receptive, positive?
I would say, and I, I think it sounded, I think it went really well with the town of Anapee. There's a lot of questions to be answered. This was kind of the, set the tone. Last week, Tuesday, we met with them. They will now be having a special meeting and will kind of, the way we're changing it too is we can kind of give them a budgetary number, but it's really hard to say this is exactly what it'll be. Just because until we finish out 2023 and start to put our costs together to go back to them is, you know, so really, the new contracts, the way they'll be laid out is they'll make us hold the township for their portion in 2024 to pay for all of 2023 services. Does that make sense? So, and that'll be the same that we're looking at doing with the three, all three townships, nothing different. And this is just the rescue side of the contract, not the fire side, so. Tom, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that, or?
Anyone else have questions for Matt?
And that's all I have, unless anybody has questions for me.
Okay, as far as mayor's appointments or comments, I have none, but Casey would like to mention something at this point, so I'll turn it over to Casey.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, the farmer's market runs through the end of the month, through the 30th, and this Sunday, we're having extended hours, so it'll be 9:00 to 3:00, with Jerry Volker and the Jolly Gents coming from 11:00 to 3:00, and three food trucks coming down, so assortment of vendors, more vendors than normal, a couple food trucks. Art Beat will be there painting rocks, so we're here till the end of October, but come on out after the Packer game and have some food and enjoy some polka if you have the opportunity.
Tell me who's gonna be there from 11:00 to 3:00?
Bandwise?
Yep.
Jerry Volker and the Jolly Gents. And the food trucks will run 11:00 to 3:00 also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next meeting will be November 7th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Then the next item is to go into closed session. Do you want to read, read that motion?
The mayor's looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parentheses, 1, parentheses, C, considering, considering employment promotion and compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, clerk, the treasurer, and the chief of police.
So move.
Moved by Scott, seconded. Moved by Scott, seconded by Midge.
Would you do a roll call, go into closed session?
Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Pavick.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Then we will go into closed session.
Can you just write the time, you guys actually?
Yep.